Good evening and welcome to the special meeting of the Board of Education for May 20th, 2019. There's only going to be one item at the special meeting, so it should go pretty quick. Mrs. Bonnefield, can you take the role, please?
Mrs. Bradford?
Here.
Mrs. Burton?
Here.
Mr. Centers?
Here.
Mrs. Frank?
Here.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Here.
Mrs. Bonnefield is here. President Johnson?
Here. We have a quorum. It'll move us to Item 2, Audience Communication. You guys want to go now, Doug, or later?
In the next meeting?
We could be...
It'll be after the district superintendent date.
Yeah, then it'll be after that break. It could be maybe 45 minutes done.
The break is typically after Item 3C.
Do it now? Okay. So we have audience communication. I have two blue slips, and I will just remind, as I always do, that there are three roles of the board. One is to set policy and enforce those policies. Second is to hire and evaluate our superintendent, and the third is to make sure our financial goals are aligned with our budget. And so if your item deals with any of those three and you need a response, then that response would come from the board. If it deals with anything else, like the day-to-day operations, then the response would come from our administration. So I do have two blue slips, and Priscilla David is the first one. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, President Johnson. School Board Member Superintendent Oquist. My name is Priscilla David, and I'm here as the President of the Livonia Education Association, the union that represents teachers and educational staff in Livonia Public Schools. For many years now, the LEA has been proud to offer five scholarships each year to LPS graduating seniors. These scholarships represent a total of $5,500 awarded yearly to worthy students. Couple of weeks ago, we requested a spot on the board agenda so that we could bring these students in, recognize their efforts, and award their scholarships. Unfortunately, we were turned down, though we were offered the opportunity to do this during audience participation. These students are all recognized at their school's honors night was the reason given, but most of our members on staff at the three high schools tell us that only the Carley Scholarship winner is announced each year. So Livonia teachers feel a strong commitment to the future of our students, a commitment strong enough to annually set aside a portion of our salaries paid to our local union and invest that in the educational advancement of our seniors. To that end, we award five scholarships, one for a student from each of our three high schools, one for a student to a community college, and one overall award of excellence. Now, because audience participation allows only three minutes, I'm going to leave it to our LEA Vice President Doug Coats to give you the names and the schools of the students to whom we have awarded scholarships this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. David. Good evening, Mr. Coats.
Good evening. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to tell you about these students. The first LEA Scholarship Award winner is Sarah Dressing. Sarah is a senior at Stevenson High School. She is a soccer player and is on the National Honor Society and is a member of the Stevenson Class Council. In the fall, she's going to be attending Purdue University, where she'll be majoring in mechanical engineering. So congratulations to Sarah. Our next scholarship winner is Joel Fergus, who is a senior at Churchill this year. Joel is an active athlete in many sports. He's also on the NHS, and he's also on student council as well. Joel is attending the University of Minnesota Duluth on a football scholarship and will be majoring in mechanical engineering as well. So you have two engineers so far. The third scholarship winner is Andrew Ulasic. He's a senior at Franklin High School. He is involved in athletics as well, in track and field and in cross-country. He's going to be attending Lawrence Tech University in Southfield and majoring in biomedical engineering. Congratulations to Andrew as well. And the fourth scholarship winner this year, the McLean Scholarship winner, goes to Eva Muller, who's also a senior at Franklin High School. She is involved in National Honor Society Girl Scouts, marching band, and she's also a percussionist as well in the marching band at Franklin. And she'll be attending the Michigan Technological University in Houghton and also studying mechanical engineering. So four out of four engineering scholarships. And Eva is the winner of the Ken McLean Scholarship, which is the overall scholarship that goes to any of the three, any senior graduating from one of the three schools. The others are reserved for one from each school. So thank you.
Thank you, Doug. And congratulations to all those winners. Okay, those were the only two blue slips.
I got four also.
Four.
One to the schools and then one overall.
Yeah, I had two blue slips.
Okay. I think there are four students for the...
Oh, four students. Okay. Then that'll move us on to Item 3, Resolution to Consider Designation of Representative for Wayne Risa Board of Education Biennial Election. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Bradford?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District adopt a resolution to consider the designation of Board Member Colleen Burton as an Electoral Representative and Board Member Mark Johnson as an alternate Electoral Representative for the June 3rd, 2019 Wayne Risa Board of Education Biennial Election. Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Are there questions or comments? Mrs. Burton?
Just as a matter of clarification for the public who may be listening, this is the Wayne Risa has their board elections, and as each district casts a vote for those, in those elections, what we need to do is to designate which of our board members is going to go and cast the vote for the individual or individuals whom this board will decide collectively to support at our next meeting, which will actually occur momentarily. So this portion is just to determine which one of us is going to go designate the vote or cast the vote rather than that the board has determined will be cast for.
Thank you, Mrs. Burton. Other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, to adopt the resolution to consider designation of Electoral Representative for Wayne Risa Board of Education Biennial Election. And Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes. That motion carries. And that takes us to Item 4, Adjournment. Is there any other business to be brought before the special meeting? Seeing none, we are adjourned, and we will be back very shortly for our regular meeting. Thank you. Good evening, and welcome back. For those who were here for our special meeting, this is the regular meeting of the Board of Education for May 20th, 2019. For those of you who are in the audience and want to follow along with our agenda, they are on the table outside of the left-hand door to your right, and you'll see the agenda. You also see blue slips. For anybody who wants to follow along with the agenda at home, you can go to our website, livoniapublicschools.org, highlight over the Board tab, and you will see agendas, and you can drop down and follow along. If you're tuning in tonight to see a lot of discussion, you're probably not going to see a lot of discussion. That's because we've already gone over these items on a number of occasions. They typically come to us at first through our study session and then the Committee of the Hall. So if you really want to dig deep and watch the discussion, the Committee of the Hall is the one you want to tune into. Those are on our website, so you can go to those if you've missed any of the ones in the past and follow along. So tonight, there will not be as much discussion on the items as you would see during the Committee of the Hall. We do have a couple of nice items tonight. We always like to start meetings with some good news, don't we? But I always like to start our meetings by telling you what our district climate goal is, and that says that all students will experience a positive, safe, and welcoming environment where both students and adults respect and value one another. That's what this board lives by, is the respect. And as I always say, we don't always agree on things, but we listen to each other and we respect each other's positions. And but what better way to teach our students in this district is for us to respect everyone who comes before the board and to have everyone who comes before the board respect us. And that's what we expect from ourselves and from our students. So that's what we live by. So we'll jump right in. I will say that after Item C, if you have your agenda, we will be taking a short break after the district update from the superintendent, and that'll be probably a five-minute or so break. I'd also like to say that, as my Vice President aptly informed me as a mom's position, during our National Merit Scholars, any parents that are here that want to get a picture of their student as they're getting the award, please feel free to come forward and be able to take a picture. Okay? So with that, Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Yes. Mrs. Bradford?
Here.
Mrs. Burton?
Here.
Mr. Centers?
Here.
Mrs. Frank?
Here.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Here.
Mrs. Bonnefield is here. President Johnson?
Here. We have a quorum. And Mrs. Bradford, would you lead us in the pledge tonight?
Of course. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening again. And we'll drop down to Item 3, our communications. And our first item is Points of Pride National Merit Scholars. And I'll turn it over to Mrs. Jenkins. Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening, President Johnson, members of the board, Superintendent Oquist. Tonight, it is my pleasure to recognize a special group of students who have excelled in the National Merit Scholarship Program. The National Merit is a academic competition for recognition and scholarships, and the program has been in place since 1955. The students you're about to meet have scored in the top 1% out of approximately 1.6 million students nationwide. The score was on the PSAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Exam. At this time, I'd like to tell you a little bit about each student, one by one, and I'll go in alphabetical order. So first up, we welcome Richard Falconer. Welcome, Richard. We prepared a certificate for each student, which reads, "Livonia Public Schools' Certificate of Recognition, Outstanding Achievement, National Merit Scholarship Finalist, Richard Falconer, selected by the National Merit Scholarship Corporation for outstanding academic success and personal growth in social and leadership endeavors. Dated May 20th, 2019, signed by Superintendent Oquist and Mr. Dan Wollenborg, Director of Secondary Programs." So there's your certificate. Richard is a senior at Churchill High School, and he is in the Math, Science, and Computers Program. He carries a 4.4 weighted grade point average and is involved in Churchill Marching Band, where he is a section leader. He is also involved in his Eagle Scout Troop 782. Richard was offered a Full Ride Scholarship to the University of Alabama through the National Merit Scholarship Program, which I thought was very noteworthy to mention. However, he has opted to become a Wolverine. He will be attending the University of Michigan Ann Arbor in the fall to study electrical engineering. Congratulations, Richard.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we welcome Sharon Mangat.
Hi, Sharon.
Sharon is also a senior at Churchill High School in the MSC program. At Churchill, Sharon has played varsity tennis for all four years and ran cross-country for two years. She's served as Vice President of the National Honor Society and also serves as Vice President of the Tutoring Club at Churchill. She maintains a 4.6 GPA and plans to attend the University of Missouri, where she will study medicine. She hopes to one day become an oncologist. Congratulations, Sharon. Next up, we welcome Akansha Panerchak.
Panic. Thanks for being here, Akansha. Akansha is a senior at Churchill High School, and you guessed it, she is also in the MSC program. At Churchill, she is in DECA. She is a DECA officer, and she qualified for the international competition two years in a row. She is also in Success Strategies, Quiz Bowl, and the Spanish National Honor Society at Churchill, all of this while carrying a 4.5 GPA. She was offered two Full Ride Scholarships through the National Merit. But she will also stay local and become a Wolverine at the University of Michigan Ann Arbor, where she will study economics and political science. She aspires to attend law or business school following her undergraduate studies. Congratulations. Next up, we welcome Jason Chi.
Hi, Jason. Long walk up to the podium.
Here's your certificate. Jason is a senior at Churchill High School in the MSC program. At Churchill, he is the captain of the drum line and plays in the percussion ensemble. He is also involved in track and field and is a member of the National Honor Society, all of this while carrying a 4.48 GPA. Jason plans to attend, you guessed it, the University of Michigan Ann Arbor, where he is currently undecided on a major. Best of luck to you, Jason. Thank you so much for being here. Next, we welcome Caitlin Russell. Caitlin is a senior at Churchill High School, and she joins her MSC classmates here this evening. At Churchill, Caitlin is an active member of the National Honor Society, the Spanish Honor Society, the Varsity Quiz Bowl, where she serves as captain, all of this while maintaining a 4.46 GPA. She plans to attend the University of Michigan Ann Arbor. I think she's already got some, a lot of friends in attendance with her as a freshman, and hopes to study electrical or computer engineering. Caitlin was notably offered a National Merit Scholarship, but decided to forego that to become a Wolverine. So congratulations to you. Next up, we welcome Shritika Venkath.
Hi. Thanks for being here.
Shritika is a senior at Churchill High School, where she is also in MSC. Am I correct? She's involved in National Honor Society, Spanish Honor Society, Rotary Interact Club, Key Club, and she's also a tutor. She carries a 4.2 GPA and plans to attend, oh, interestingly enough, Michigan State University, where she will be a pre-med major. Congratulations and best wishes to you. Lastly, I'd like to tell you about two more students who were unable to be with us this evening. We have certificates, which we will be sure to get to their schools. The first is Maria Tran, and Maria is also a senior at Churchill in MSC program. At Churchill, Maria is the editor of the school's literary magazine and junior editor of the school's newspaper. She is the Community Service Officer in the Key Club and is a member of the Spanish National Honor Society, all of this while carrying a 4.58 weighted GPA. Honor Society, all of this while carrying a 4.58 weighted GPA. Maria plans to attend Wayne State University for her undergrad, and she aspires to obtain a medical PhD in psychiatry. She hopes to one day work as a physician scientist at an academic institution. Congratulations, Maria. And last but not least, we have a certificate for Eva Muller, a senior at Franklin High School. She is attending her tennis banquet this evening, where I believe her dad is the coach. She really didn't have much of a choice on that one. At Franklin, Eva is captain of her varsity tennis team. She serves as a committee leader for the National Honor Society. She is a center snare and section leader in the Franklin Marching Band. She plays in the percussion ensemble, the film orchestra, and she is a member of the inaugural girls bowling team at Franklin, all of this while carrying a 4.48 GPA. Eva received a National Merit Scholarship and plans to attend Michigan Technological University, where she will study mechanical engineering. We will make sure Eva gets her certificate as well. And that concludes our presentation this evening. This is one of my favorite traditions that we carry on in the school district each year. So join me in another round of applause for all of these amazing students.
Thank you, Mrs. Jenkins. Comments from the board?
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Outstanding. Good luck to all of you.
Mrs. Oakwist. Thank you. So we are so proud to have you here this evening. This is a very, very distinct honor and one that is earned after only a great deal of effort and dedication to your studies. And in addition to your studies, each of you have much more in which you're involved and you've contributed back to your school and back to our district. We are so proud of each and every one of you. We're so happy you were able to be with us tonight. We thank your families for being here with us tonight. There is so much to celebrate. We can't wait to see you cross the stage in just a couple of weeks. We congratulate the teachers with whom you've worked. We have Mr. Coats here, who I bet most of you know, is our chairperson of, our department chair of MSC, and the staff with whom you've worked, who I know is also very, very proud. So on behalf of our whole district, congratulations to each of you, and please be sure to let us know how things are going for you as you head off to college.
Very good. All right, then, we'll move on to item 3B, update from LPS Education Foundation. Mrs. Jenkins.
Thank you, President Johnson. Each year, we welcome members of the Livonia Public Schools Education Foundation to offer an update on the many wonderful things that are happening. As a district, we are so fortunate to have the dedicated support of this amazing foundation. Tonight, we will hear from just a few of its volunteers, who will offer updates on key programs that benefit our students' families and our staff. Joining us tonight, we have Foundation President Diane Paliselli, who is a Ford Motor Company retiree turned super volunteer. We also welcome Foundation Board members, Lorna Durand, who is a retired LPS administrator, and Mrs. Linda Scheel, who is a former LPS Board of Education member, longtime PTA volunteer, and current City of Livonia treasurer. These longtime friends of LPS have also invited special guests of their own, and I will leave those introductions to Mrs. Paliselli, as we now welcome her to the podium to offer an update from the foundation.
Thank you, Mrs. Jenkins. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mrs. Jenkins, President Johnson, board members, and Superintendent Oakwist. Thank you for this opportunity to provide an update about the many accomplishments of the LPS Education Foundation over the last year. It's my privilege to represent the foundation and talk about our programs and how proud we are to serve Livonia Public Schools. With me tonight are two of the directors from the foundation's board, Vice President Linda Scheel and Director Lorna Durand. And in just a few minutes, Linda and Lorna will share some of the accomplishments of the foundation over this past year. But before I turn the podium over to them, I would like to thank the many supporters of the foundation, starting with the Board of Education, Superintendent Oakwist, and the many LPS employees who so graciously are committed to our mission. There are many volunteers in the community who contribute to the success of our events as well. We also receive generous financial support from LPS employees, LPS retirees, PTAs and PTSAs, individuals and corporate donors. And without this community-wide support, the foundation simply could not do what we do for our students. Now, at this time, I would like to introduce and thank two of our corporate donors, starting with Parkside Credit Union. Representing them tonight is Heather Belazi, who is Vice President of Branch Services. Heather, would you please join me at the podium? Parkside Credit Union is proud to be a Michigan nonprofit organization since 1953. They get involved in the community and find ways to give back. In fact, they are a founding partner of the LPS Education, being one of the first to offer their financial support, starting in 2007. And their generosity has continued over these many years. In recent times, they have helped sponsor the district's Bounce Back to School Party. This event is held each year to celebrate the return to school, and it is a major fundraiser for the foundation's Competitive Edge College Savings Program. Parkside takes part with their financial support, as well as having a presence at the event onsite at the petting zoo. And by the way, this year's event is set for August 20 at Riley Upper Elementary School. Parkside Credit Union is very enthusiastic in their support for our mission, and we really appreciate their generosity over the years. Heather, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'd like to present you with a certificate of appreciation, and I'll read it. This is a certificate of appreciation presented to Parkside Credit Union for its financial contributions to the Livonia Public Schools Education Foundation during the 2018-19 school year, signed May 20, 2019. Thank you so much. Next, I would like to recognize another well-known corporate sponsor, Masco Corporation. Representing Masco, I'd like to introduce Sue Sable, Director of Communications and Corporate Giving. Sue, would you kindly join me at the podium?
Thank you for being here tonight. Masco has been well-known in southeast Michigan for a long time. In fact, the company was founded in Detroit in 1923 and enjoyed a great reputation for nearly one century. More recently, they moved their headquarters to Livonia. And to quote them, "Masco is working very hard to be a good neighbor in your community." And they do just that. Masco and Sue made their commitment to support the foundation even before they moved into their new headquarters in Livonia. And so began this great partnership for which we are very grateful. They have designated their donations to support the foundation's Competitive Edge College Savings Program. And they also serve as a sponsor of the foundation's annual luncheon, which that too is a fundraiser for the Competitive Edge Program. We appreciate your commitment and your generosity, Sue. Thank you so much, and I'd like to present you with a certificate of appreciation. And this one reads, Certificate of Appreciation to Masco Corporation for its financial contributions to the Livonia Public Schools Education Foundation during the 2018-19 school year, dated May 20, 2019. Thank you so much. Now, to hear the latest news about the foundation and its programs, I would like to turn the podium over to Linda Scheel and Lorna Durand. And again, my thanks to each of these generous donors and to the entire community for their support.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The Competitive Edge Program was started to encourage our LPS families to not only start thinking about education after graduation, but to actually start planning for it. We meet with kindergarten parents in the fall at all of our elementary schools and give them information, as well as let them know that the LPS Education Foundation will contribute $100 to a savings account for their child. This will grow, hopefully, throughout their K-12 years in LPS and will be distributed upon graduation for use at a college or a trade school, as mentioned in our brochures. We currently have 440 students enrolled in this year's cohort. At this time, our first graduating cohort, which will be the class of 2020, will have 161 students. We are happy to note that the number of students enrolled has grown a little each year, as parents realize the value of investing in their child's education, no matter the amount.
President Johnson, board members, and Superintendent Oakwist, good evening. It's my privilege to be here tonight to share some information with you about the grant program, which is sponsored by the LPS Education Foundation. As some of you are aware, the grant program was initiated in 2013 to provide financial support to supply learning tools to LPS employees. The grants support the district curriculum, the LPS shared vision and collective commitments, the district climate goals, and other focus areas. The last two school years, we have opened up the grant program to all staff, both instructional and non-instructional. The funding for the grant program is provided through the generous donations made by LPS staff members, community donors, as well as financial support from the Education Foundation itself. During the six-year grant program, the foundation has awarded 107 grants totaling $214,212.98. In the 2018-19 school year, 17 grants were awarded for a total of $31,452.98. I'd like to give example of three grants that we awarded this year. The first one was titled STEM and Robotics at Haze. They were able to purchase Five Sphero Spark Plus STEAM Education Robots, Hexnub Covers, Four Ollie Application Controlled Robots, and Nine Apple iPads and Product Coverage. Their project was an enhancement of the next-generation science standards and new program offering for students at Haze. It is hoped that it will be a springboard for getting robotics and programming class offering there. Eight teachers submitted the grant proposal, and they were awarded $3,675.03. The second goal I'd like to share tonight is the Honors Instrument Scholarship Program at Franklin High School. They were able to purchase one higher-quality cello and bow that would allow the orchestra's students an opportunity to advance. This proposal allowed students to have access to an instrument they probably could not afford on their own, and that would support the growth and the development of their skills. It was submitted by Teresa Sarahol, and she was awarded $3,169. Last but not least, that I'd like to share tonight was the flexible seating at Webster. They were able to purchase seating options that support the curriculum and also district initiatives, as well as supporting students, and as the teacher wrote, quote, "to have their unique learning needs met," unquote. The grant itself purchased two auto storage stools, five yoga mats, a small futon, and a standing table that allowed her students to use them on a daily basis. It was submitted by Natalie Wall, and her grant was for $465.56. It continues to be a wonderful gift from the foundation, of which we are very, very proud. In addition, the grant committee is composed of retired teachers and administrators, and their continued commitment to the LPS school district, as well as the foundation, is evident in the amount of time they provide to the grant program itself. And I could go on and on, but the benefits of this program are just absolutely numerous. We have been witness to many innovative ideas and practices. The rubric used to score and write, well, to use to write and score the grant proposals emphasizes curriculum, best practices, research, and student academic and social, emotional growth. When we visit the classrooms to see the learning tools and proposals put into practice, to say that we are impressed is almost an understatement. We are just, we are just more than impressed. It is just so thrilling to see what is going on. The staff and students alike are benefiting from the program. The enthusiasm, the application, and the student growth are evident, not only in the observations that we witness, but also in the year-end evaluation summaries that all the grant we see awardees write for me. Tonight, I would like to thank you very much for inviting us to share information with you about the LPS Education Foundation.
Questions or comments from the board? Mrs. Frank.
Thank you for all that you do to the foundation, the board, and our corporate sponsors. It is an amazing program that we have to offer our teachers, and the teachers that take the time to write the grants, it is fantastic. My son was in a classroom this year that got awarded, and I think he was just as excited. He didn't know what the check was for. But he was just as excited. They were thrilled as a class to be receiving the check when you all came to distribute it to them. It was a really exciting day for them. And it enhances the classroom in a unique and special way. So thank you for partnering with us. The board cannot provide some things to the classrooms, and you guys do a phenomenal job of enhancing what we already give to them. So thank you so much. It really is making a difference to individual kids. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Other questions or comments? Mrs. Burton.
Mrs. Durand, I believe that I saw the application go out this week for the upcoming year's grant. Is that correct? Okay. So if you are an employee of LPS and you have an idea for a grant, certainly that it went out to all users, I mean, for it. Okay. All right. So they can take a look at that. And we do really encourage folks to, individually or collectively, as you mentioned tonight, some were collective grants, to take advantage of that. It's fabulous to see all the folks in our community giving back to our teachers in our classrooms. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Burton. Mrs. Oakwist.
Thank you, President Johnson. I just wanted to just mention again, thanks so much to Diane and to Linda and Lorna for being here tonight on behalf of the foundation, and certainly to our corporate partners at Parkside and Masco. And a special shout-out to Sue, who's made it through two board meetings now in a row. So we appreciate you being here. But I wanted to, Diane, you mentioned next year was our first graduating class for the Competitive Edge. So this time next year, as we approach commencements, we will have our first graduates who will be awarded the Competitive Edge Scholarship, who signed up back when they were in first grade, correct?
We're very excited about it. Yep. It'll be the class of 2020. So a year from now, we'll be giving away over 160 scholarships. We're very thrilled. We've been planning for this event for almost a year already. So it'll be a big splash and something that everyone will be able to celebrate in, and we're really, really looking forward to doing this.
It's just amazing that that time has gone by so quickly, and that seed of an idea that started many, many years ago is coming to fruition. So certainly, the grant program, we continue to see flourish throughout the district. Lorna, you and your team do a great job. I don't know how you make the selections that you do, because it's tough. There are lots of great ideas out there that come from our staff that are tied to some pretty innovative practices, and we're thrilled that you're able to support some of those extras that otherwise we would not have in the classroom. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Oakwist. Other questions or comments? Couple of comments I'd like to make. Diane, you make this seem so seamless, and it is not, is anything but. The amount of work that goes into the foundation, Lorna, Linda, everyone who is involved with the foundation understands how much work really goes into this. It's a tremendous organization, and with regard to the Competitive Edge, I have to put in my plug. I've had the privilege of presenting that program at various schools in September. And although we're making strides in the penetration, we're getting a greater percentage, I still am amazed at the number of people that think there's a catch to it. It really is, if there's anything that's free, this is it. And it's an encouragement to start your own 529 savings program. And anyone who's listening, who watches this meeting, please, if you have a kindergartner coming in in September, please sign up for the program. As you can see, we're just about to give our first scholarships, and it's well worth it. So thank you again for everything you do. Okay, we'll move on to item 3C, district update from the superintendent, Mrs. Oakwist.
Thank you, President Johnson. We do have a few updates for you as we gear up for the final month of school. We want to congratulate a number of LPS staff who were honored last week at the Wayne County RISA Board Meeting. They were honored with Parent Advisory Committee awards, and these individuals were nominated by grateful parents with whom they've worked. Dr. Jennifer Terrio, Director of Student Services, Student Services Staff Members Kim Kalasi, Dawn Canell, Casey Loisel, Rita Magdowski, and Laura Pluff. Each of them were nominated by, again, as I mentioned- Each of them were nominated by, again, as I mentioned, grateful parents with whom they've worked, and were honored by the RESA Board. We are so proud of the work that they do, and we congratulate them once again. We have a number of different honor nights, honors nights, and concerts, and performances, and other special events taking place throughout our district, and I'd like to just give a special shout-out to all those who make it happen, and many of those behind the scenes. We have, at each of our new PACs, a group of dedicated students who are part of the Theater Tech Class. They work very hard, not only during the day, but beyond the school hours, to make sure that these events go seamlessly, and that we are able to take advantage of these beautiful new facilities. So, thank you not only to our staff, but to all of our Theater Tech students who put in lots of hours in the evenings and on the weekends to make these special events happen. Churchill, we want to mark, they'd like you to mark your calendars. They will be holding their 50th year celebration this fall on September 27th. They will be sharing information via social media and other formats, but they'd like to get the word out there to alumni, both staff and students. We'd like to thank the over 150 adult and student volunteers from Miles City Church who came together and worked at 10 of our LPS schools over this past weekend. 150 volunteers, they came to spruce up primarily the exterior of the schools. They did weeding, and raking, and planting. They deposited, I don't know how many yards of mulch, but quite a lot.
A lot.
A lot is the technical amount that Mr. Francis just gave me.
Ten per building.
At least 10 yards per school. So, I'd like to just give a huge thank you to Selena Bagley from Miles City Church, who first came to us with the idea for this service project, and to everyone who volunteered their time to help. And again, a special shout-out to all of our staff who also came and joined them this weekend. The before and after pictures are amazing, and I think, Mrs. Jenkins, you have a little highlight reel on our Facebook. Okay. We'd like to, again, congratulate, I know I mentioned that Hoover Elementary received the Green Flag Award, the first elementary school in the state to receive this designation. They, we had their, they had their ceremony last Friday. I know a number of us were able to be present, as were Senator Polhanki and Representative Potsky, and a number of our local officials. So, we were thrilled to celebrate with Hoover and congratulate them on that effort. I wanted to let you know, I think we mentioned at the last meeting, but we, we will have our first community informational meeting regarding our mileage proposals on June 4th at 6:30 PM, right here in the main administration building. So, it'll be a one-hour presentation from 6:30 to 7:30, and we invite you to join us. We have some congratulations going out to a few of our athletic teams for success in the spring. It's hard to believe they were able to get events in with all of the rain, but with a lot of rescheduling, our Stevenson-Spartan girls softball team captured their first division title since 2006. Congratulations to Coach Kevin Hannigan and his team. We're excited to watch you continue. And speaking of, I believe we mentioned varsity, Franklin varsity tennis tonight. They are the KLA East Division champs, and they have had just a tremendous season. Our Livonia Girls Lacrosse Team, our United Team, won their first playoff game and are in the MHSA Regionals this Wednesday, 6:00 PM at Novi. So, in their inaugural season, they are already in the regional finals. So, congratulations to them. And work has begun. As you know, we did quite a bit of work, speaking of athletics, outside at Churchill this past summer. So, this year, we turn to Stevenson and Franklin, and actually, this weekend, work will begin on the Stevenson Athletic Field, and then next will be Franklin. We have our high school graduations coming up in just another week and a half, two weeks. Friday, the 31st, we'll celebrate Stevenson at 7:00 PM. Saturday, June 1st, at 7:00 PM, we will celebrate our Franklin graduates, and then it's your turn. On Sunday, June 2nd, you probably already know the date and time, right? Sunday, June 2nd, at 2:00 PM, we will celebrate our Churchill seniors. So, this is a very exciting time of year, lots of wonderful events, not only at our high schools, but art fairs, and music concerts, and ice cream socials throughout the district. So, again, thank you to all of our staff and to our volunteers who make those special events happen.
Thank you, Mrs. Oakquist.
You're welcome.
And, Mrs. Burton?
Mrs. Oakquist, we asked this question of the committee the whole meeting, but in case anyone missed that meeting, which is possible, for community members who use our, utilize our tracks.
Yes.
Stevenson and Franklin tracks will be closed for a period of time this summer, and the other tracks that they're able to be used are located?
Churchill, and Holmes, and Emerson.
Okay.
And of course, the Bentley Field as well.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mrs. Burton. And at this point, we'll take our short little break, and we'll be back shortly. We are back. Thank you, Andrew. And we'll continue with our agenda. We're down to Item 3D, Written Communications. Are there any written communications? Seeing none, we'll go to Item 3E, Audience Communications. I do have one blue slip. I would remind our speaker that we have a three-minute time limit, and this is Mrs. Martinez. Good evening.
Good evening.
Nice to see you again.
First of all, good evening. Wanted to say I'm here to represent Livonia United Girls Hockey Club, and I wanted to give the Livonia Community Board of Education a follow-up from the last meeting on April 29th. First, I want to say thank you to the Board of Education in Livonia, as well as Dan Wallenborg, and all three high school activities directors, Paul Mercer, Janice Faras, and Nancy Thurston, and as well as the club sponsor, Rob Kucharzki, who's a Livonia Public School teacher at Holmes, for the support and tremendous progress we have made in a little amount of time becoming a club. I do want to clarify and correct what was stated during our Communications Board Me- Board of Education meeting on April 29th by some of the speakers about hockey girls not being allowed to wear their hockey jerseys in school. So, I spoke with the girls to find out where the information came from, and what they had told me is it was just a misunderstanding and misspoke, understanding that being a, thought they, thought it was a school rule, not being allowed to wear their game jersey to school. I asked them where they got this information from, or who told them they couldn't wear it. Apparently, it was no administrator. It was just their thought it was a rule, and they didn't want to challenge the rule. So, I just wanted to clarify that, let everybody know. It was a misunderstanding on their part, it wasn't an actual fact, it was just an assumption. We all know about assumptions. So, I apologize for the misunderstanding again, and I just wanted, came here to let you know the gratitude, the support we have received, and the partnership we have established moving forward as a unified club. Livonia Girls Hockey Community will be ecstatic on being a part of their school, and being able to play for school, and pride playing for the school. And I would have to say the future looks bright for the club and years of growth to come as well in the city of Livonia. Thank you again on behalf of the Livonia United Girls Hockey Club.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Martinez, for coming in and making that clarification. The board appreciates that very much.
No problem. Appreciate the board working with us, and Dan as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That will move us on to Item 3F, Response to Prior Audience Communication. Is there any response? Seeing none, then that will take us to Item 4, our Consent Agenda. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Frank?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the following Consent Agenda items as recommended by the superintendent. 5A, minutes of the regular meeting of April 29th, 2019. 5B, minutes of the special meeting of April 29th, 2019. 5C, minutes of the closed session of April 29th, 2019. 5D, minutes of the special meeting of May 13th, 2019. 5E, minutes of the closed session of May 13th, 2019. Support?
We have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mrs. Burton. Are there any questions or comments regarding the Consent Agenda? Seeing none, we have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes. Motion carries. And since the Consent Agenda took care of all of Item 5, we will move to Item 6.
Close session minutes.
We have.
We don't have any.
We don't have those.
Okay.
We're good.
That'll move us to Item 6, Business Matters, and the first item, A, is Approval of Bid Results for Firewall Replacement, 2013 Bond. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mr. Centers?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the purchase of a new district-wide firewall solution from Sentinel Technologies, Ann Arbor, Michigan, for $137,294.75, plus a contingency of $13,729.48, for a total cost of $151,024.23.
Support?
We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, and, Mr. Francis?
President Johnson?
Can you give us an update on this?
I will. We did have some in-depth conversation last week at the Committee of the Whole, and the district's Administrator of Information and Educational Technology had joined me with the- this discussion. And while it was a bit more complex of a purchase than we're generally used to, I do believe that we got down to the basics of it. And just for a refresher for the board and everyone watching at home, this is a planned purchase from the 2013 bond to update the district's firewall, both hardware and software. The purchase will, in fact, not only update and upgrade what we currently use for our firewall system, but will also expand the capability of the network, as well as allow for future expandability based upon future technologies that we may or may not even know about yet. So we do recommend this planned 2013 bond purchase to the board.
Thank you, Mr. Francis. And just for those who may be a little technically illiterate like myself, can you just explain what the firewall is?
At the base level, the firewall is one of a few different protections that the district has from outside threats to our network. The hardware capabilities also allow both essentially thoroughfares or comings and goings to our network. So it's expanding the size, but also it is a initial level of threat protection, of which then we also have another check software program as a protection, as well as on the computers themselves or laptops themselves that we have in the district.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, to approve the bid results for firewall replacement 2013 bond. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Centers.
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford.
Yes.
Mrs. Burton.
Yes.
Mrs. Frank.
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson.
Yes, motion carries. That takes us to item number six, B, Approval of Bid Results for Elementary Music Sound Systems. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mrs. Bonnefield.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the purchase of 19 elementary classroom sound systems, as awarded through the bid process from Sound Planning Communications, for a total expenditure of $79,844.
Support. We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mr. Centers. This will be Mr. Willemborg.
Yes, good evening and thank you, President Johnson. Through the last several meetings, I have shared the details of a plan to equip each K-6 elementary classroom, each K-6 class, music classroom, with a high-quality sound system that includes a portable rack and music-quality speakers installed on the wall. The sound systems will strengthen the learning experience by providing music accompaniment for singing and movement and rhythm activities. And with these new speakers, students will have a better understanding and a clear depiction of pulse and beat, of tone and balance from Beethoven to Bon Jovi. Sound Planning Communication was awarded this contract, which includes 19 fully-installed systems. The funds are designated from the 2013 bond, in total $79,844. I recommend your support of this proposal to purchase music classroom sound system.
Thank you for that eloquent. Are there questions or comments from the board? Seeing none. And one question, this is just in the music room. This isn't portable to other rooms?
The rack is portable. The speakers will be permanently installed in the music classrooms.
Thank you. Mrs. Burton.
And again, just as we have many, many, many times thanked our community. With this being funded through our bond, this is one example of some of the classroom upgrades and equipment that our students can benefit from, that really is a direct thank you is owed to our community for supporting that bond and looking at all the many, many, many improvements we've been able to make through our district. But I know our music department really appreciates this one.
I'll ditto that. Up until this time, teachers were bringing in boom boxes or, you know, finding something where they could play this, play this music.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mr. Centers, to approve the bid results for elementary music sound systems. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role?
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
President Johnson?
Yes, motion carries. That takes us to item.
Thank you.
C, Approval to Purchase Flexible Furniture for Grant, Hayes, Kennedy, and Roosevelt Elementary Schools, 2013 Bond. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the purchase of flexible furniture from Interior Environments, in the amount of $146,716.79, for the following schools: Grant Elementary, Hayes Elementary, Kennedy Elementary, and Roosevelt Elementary. Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Burton. And Mrs. Scott's going to help us with this. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, President Johnson. As was discussed at the May 13th Committee of the Whole, there are four elementary schools that have worked with interior environments, two design spaces unique to their school and to their needs. And again, the four schools are Grant, Hayes, Kennedy, and Roosevelt. The funds being utilized are from the 2013 bond allocated specifically for student furniture. And again, it utilizes the National Intergovernmental Purchasing Alliance Discount Program. And as was just said about the music equipment, we want to thank the community for supporting the bond in 2013, which continues to impact our schools and our students. It's recommended that the board approve the flexible furniture purchase for the four schools totaling $146,716.79.
Thank you, Mrs. Scott.
Thank you.
Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Jarvis, supported by Mrs. Burton, to approve the purchase of flexible furniture for Grant, Hayes, Kennedy, and Roosevelt Elementary Schools from the 2013 bond. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role?
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes, that motion carries. Thank you. That takes us to item 6D, Approval of Resolution for Wayne Risa's 2019-2020 General Fund Operating Budget. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mrs. Burton.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District adopt the resolution supporting the general fund operating budget for the 2019-2020 school year for the Wayne County Regional Educational Service Agency, RISA.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mrs. Bradford. And Mrs. Smith is going to help us with this. Good evening.
Thank you, President Johnson. I would like to recommend the board's support of the Wayne Risa budget, as we discussed in detail at our study session and our committee meeting. They continue to be judicious in their budgeting processes, and they continue to look for opportunities for ways they can support their local districts. I'll make mention of the Wayne Risa Special Education Transportation Payment, that they were able to bump that up by $400,000 during this current year. So we appreciate that they continue to look at their finances and look for ways that they can support our local districts. So for that reason, I recommend that we support the Risa-proposed budget they presented to us.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none. We have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mrs. Bradford, to adopt the resolution for Wayne Risa's 2019-2020 General Fund Operating Budget. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. That'll take us to item 6E, Appointment of Auditor for 2018-2019. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mrs. Bradford.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District appoint the firm of Plant Moran to audit and prepare the financial report for Livonia Public Schools School District for the 2018-2019 school year, at a total cost of $45,900. Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield. And Mrs. Smith again will help us. Good evening.
Thank you, President Johnson. It is my recommendation that the board approve the appointment of Plant Moran as our auditors for the 2017, for 2018-19 school year. Again, as we discussed in detail at our committee meeting and our study sessions, they continue to be a leader in the K-12 accounting world. They are always putting on professional development for the local districts, as well as for board members, so we have an understanding of what current practices are and best practices as well. The auditors are seeking a fee of $45,900, which I think is, you know, great value for the services they provide. They typically are here for three full weeks during the summer. And while they're here, they're looking at a variety of things, testing our internal controls, taking a look at our processes. They're checking to make sure that we're compliant with the board policies we have in place. They're also looking at the state laws to make sure we're compliant with that, as well as federal guidelines in place for the variety of grants that we have in the district. So they do a lot of in-depth testing while they're here. Then again, in the fall, they'll come and present to the board what their findings are. And also, they're a resource throughout the year. They offer their accounting advice throughout the year, and it's kind of included in this price that we pay this time of year for the auditing services. So for those reasons, I do recommend that we appoint Plant Moran as our auditors.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Bradford, supported by Mrs. Bonnefield, to approve the appointment of auditors for 2018-2019. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
President Johnson?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. That takes us to item seven, Our Personnel Matters. And item A is Retirements. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mrs. Frank.
Move that the Board of Education of Livonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached resolutions of appreciation for the services rendered by Karen Anderson, Charlene Behringhaus, Susan Byrd, Carol DeBoudry, Kathleen Grainer, Donald Harper, Judith Hogg, Patricia Horgan, Dean Kant, Carrie Corrigan, Kathleen Larabel, Jill Manchester, Sharon Main, Jenna Penske, Margaret Schleck, and Colleen Sweeney.
Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mrs. Bradford. Mr. Archibald, good evening.
Good evening and thank you. The individuals listed retire with a combined 361.8 years of experience with Livonia Public Schools. I'd like to offer them my sincerest congratulations and ask that the board adopt the attached resolutions of appreciation and recognition of their years of dedicated service to the students of Livonia Public Schools.
Thank you, Mr. Archibald. Questions or comments from the board?
Congratulations.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
President Johnson.
Mrs. Frank.
This is quite a list. I think this year, especially, several of my kids have had these teachers, and they're just fantastic teachers who have done, and administrators who have done a fantastic job and staff with what they do. And so we thank them for their service and for what they've done to the students and all they've given to our district. So thank you again, especially those that we've had personally in our family. It really, we really appreciate the impact they've had on our kids.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Frank, supported by Mrs. Bradford, to adopt the resolutions of appreciation for employees who are retiring. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes, and congratulations. Thank you. That motion carries. That takes us to item seven, B, Resignations. And this is for our information only. So we'll move to item seven, C, Approval of Separation Agreement. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mrs. Bonnefield.
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District approve the separation agreement between the Livonia Public Schools School District, Livonia Educational Administrators, Leads, and Sheila Okane. Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. Burton. Mr. Archibald, do you want to add anything to that?
Nothing to add, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Archibald. We have a motion by Mrs. Bonnefield, supported by Mrs. Burton, to approve the separation agreement. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
President Johnson?
Yes, motion carries. That takes us to item seven, D, Sympathy Resolution for the Family of Marion Halke, Food Service Helper at Johnson Upper Elementary School. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson.
Mr. Centers?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached sympathy resolution for the family of Marion Halke.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Jarvis. Yes, that's a good idea. Mr. Centers, why don't you read the resolution?
Absolutely. Whereas, the Board of Education was saddened to hear of her untimely death of Marion Halke, and whereas she was employed by the Livonia Public Schools School District as a general helper at Johnson Upper Elementary School, beginning on September 9th, 2015, and whereas she consistently demonstrated her outstanding dedication to students, parents, and staff. And whereas Marion Halke will be profoundly missed by her students, her colleagues, and the community. Now, therefore, it resolved that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District offer its deepest sympathy to the family and friends of Marion Halke.
Thank you, Mr. Centers. Anything to add to that, Mr. Archibald? Mrs. Oakley?
Thank you. We just, again, want to, on behalf of our entire district, our board, our district administrative team, and certainly I know her colleagues at Johnson, who cared for her greatly, and our hearts go out to her children and to her entire family and to her colleagues. So we are, we're so saddened to hear of Marion's passing, and we are keeping her family, her friends, and her school community in our thoughts and prayers.
Thank you, Mrs. Oakley. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mr. Centers, supported by Mrs. Jarvis, to adopt a sympathy resolution for Marion Halke. Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mrs. Bonnefield says yes. President Johnson?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you. That'll take us to item eight, Hearing from Board Members. And our first item is the first reading of Board Policy JLB, Class Schools. And Mr. Willemborg.
Yes, thank you, President Johnson. This policy, JLB, was written over 30 years ago. We thought it might benefit from a bit of a language massage and revision. And so there you have it. We've provided that, and just to provide a little context, and made sure that those gifts receive prior approval from the building-level student government and the building administration. I recommend this policy for a second reading at our next regular meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Willemborg. Comments from the board? Seeing none, is everybody comfortable with the language?
Yes.
And we'll put it on for a second reading in our next regular meeting? Is everybody good with that?
Yes.
All right. That'll take us to item eight, B. And this is again, a first reading, for removal of Board Policy JM, Contests for Students. And again, Mr. Willemborg.
Thank you again, President Johnson. Another policy over 30 years in age. We thought we needed to look at it, analyze it again. And as we, you know, read through it with my principal group, you know, we determined that this really has, is not a meaningful policy for us. We don't, certainly don't use it on a day-to-day basis. It just, without that context, it doesn't make sense. Our recommendation is for its complete elimination. Nothing will be lost with it being gone. So I recommend this policy be eliminated, and it be subject to a second reading at our next regular meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Willemborg. Everybody comfortable, Mrs. Frank?
Yes, I'm comfortable with it. But I also just wanted to mention that everything that is listed under any type of contest for students is covered under another policy. So it's not like we're deleting contests for students or something. It's, all of that will be handled under a different policy. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, everybody good? Okay. Everybody good, then, with removing this?
Yes.
All right. And then it'll be on for the second reading at our next regular meeting. And then it'll take us to item eight, C, approval of resolution for Wayne Risa Board Election. May I have a motion, please?
President Johnson?
Mrs. Burton?
Move that the Board of Education of the Livonia Public Schools School District adopt the attached resolution to designate LPS Board member Colleen Burton as the local district's Wayne Risa election representative, Mark Johnson, as the alternate. Also move that votes to be cast for Wayne Risa Board candidates, James Berry and Linda Jackson. Support.
We have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mrs. Frank. Are there questions or comments from the Board? Mrs. Burton?
This goes somewhat without saying, but for those of, who are maybe listening at home who may not be following what's going on, I am in support of the two candidates. They are running unopposed, and they have both served Wayne Risa's Board for many, many years, and have done an exemplary job.
Thank you, Mrs. Burton. I would agree with that. Other questions or comments? Seeing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Burton, supported by Mrs. Frank, for the approval of resolution for Wayne Risa Board Election. And Mrs. Bonnefield, would you take the role, please?
Mrs. Burton?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bradford?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.